I'd like to welcome everyone to Commissioner's Court. We appreciate you being here this morning. If you would, please take your conversations outside and mute your phones. At this time, before we get started, we would ask, we have Mr. Rico, Dean Rico, to lead us in our invocation, and Commissioner McCann, the pledges, please.
Good morning.
Good morning.
If you haven't read the Bible before, and you start in First Chronicles, you're struggling for the first four chapters, because it's just a long genealogical list of names. But there's one name where it stops, and it makes a comment about the guy, and it's the only one in these four chapters of names. And it says, "And Jabez called on the God of Israel, saying, 'Oh, that you would greatly bless me and enlarge my territory, that your hand would be with me, and that you would keep me from evil, that I may not cause pain.'" So God granted him what he requested, it says. So I don't know how it goes in other county commission meetings in this country, but this morning, Father in heaven, in here, we have the audacity to come to you and ask that you bless us. Bless these commissioners, their families, their homes, their livelihoods, and their futures. Enlarge the territory of their influence here, and bless this county with wisdom, prosperity, and lawful peace and safety, and bless this meeting, in Jesus' name.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the Republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to the Texas one state under God, one and indivisible.
Mr. Rico, thank you very much. We appreciate it. Well, again, good morning. We appreciate you being here with us today. The time is 9:02. We do have a quorum present, so we'll call this meeting to order at 9:04. Any citizens' comments?
Yes, sir.
All right. Item one, consider and take action on minutes of previous meeting of Commissioner's Court held on January the 14th of 2025. Excuse me, 28th. Questions, comments, discussion concerning the minutes? If not, entertain a motion.
I'd like to make the motion to approve the minutes of the previous meeting of Commissioner's Court held on January 14th, 2025.
I'll second the motion.
Motion?
Is the most of favor?
Yeah, 28th.
Twenty-eight.
Yeah. Motion made by Commissioner Spivin, second by Commissioner Richardson, to approve the minutes of January 28th as presented. All those in favor of the motion? Four, opposed, and abstained. Passes three, one. Item number two, consider and take action on a request for refund of overpayment of taxes from the Henderson County Tax Assessor Collector. Good morning.
I have 12 refund checks for court approval totaling $79,973.27.
Court, questions?
It's like it's just the basic double payments, 100% disabled vets, and some religious exemptions and ARBs, so.
Any further questions or comments? Entertain a motion.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the overpayment of taxes as presented.
I'll second the motion.
Motion made by Commissioner Richardson, and second by Commissioner McCann, to approve the request for refund of overpayment of taxes from the Henderson County Tax Assessor Collector as presented. All those in favor? Passes unanimously by those present. Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Item three, consider and take action on a resolution opposing elimination of county-wide polling place program. And, good morning.
Good morning, Court. So, at this time, I think it's necessary for us to look at this and review this. There's legislature that's been filed, legislation that's been filed for bills to review by the summer, and I just think that Henderson County needs to back this program. We currently use the countywide polling place program here in our county, and we don't want that to go away. Our county likes that it works for our voters. It's been successful. It's just a good program for us to continue using. And I would like to, if it comes to having to go to Austin, to represent us, to say that we want to keep that, I would like the support from the court. So, Mr. Davis has reviewed the resolution, and I just, I'm...
Now, there has been legislation filed...
Yes.
...to eliminate this option.
Yes, there's currently four bills that hit on this topic. So, we would like to show our support to make sure that we don't lose the option to do this. This is our option to do it, so we don't want to not have that option.
And currently, we operate, on Election Day, 14 vote centers.
Seventeen.
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 How many locations would we have to have with...
We would have to go back to 30.
Thirty.
Thirty locations.
What's the average staffing?
At least four.
At least four.
Four, not bigger locations will be more, but at least four. So, and then equipment, you've got to look at equipment, having everything available for that. So, it would be a cost increase if we did have to go back to precinct voting.
Having poll workers, we currently struggle now with trying to fill for 17 locations, is that correct?
Yes, that would be a struggle. I mean, and polling locations, because you're looking at some areas that we struggle now to keep our polling locations. That would be another struggle, and if we ever have to pay, I mean, we're getting into that, too, so.
What are we paying now, an hour?
The poll workers are $1,250.
$1,250 an hour?
Mm-hmm.
What's the average age, do you think?
Seventy to eighty, sixty, sixty-five to eighty.
Sixty-five to eighty.
So...
When you had 30 polling places, and I can remember when we had that here, but, you know, all that was established back before the automobile. You had horse and buggy. People had to, couldn't travel as far as they did, but now people, they drive to town twice a day for a pack of cigarettes, you know? So, it's no problem for people to drive to a polling places that are spread out. And I can see the only reason they had so many a long time ago is the travel that you had to have to get there to go vote. They wanted to make it convenient for everybody to be able to get there. Convenience is the automobile now to get to where you need to go. And I don't see why they think this is not working, you know, what the issue of it is. I think we're one of the first, one of the early counties to even pass this and get it done, do it. So, but it's working good for our county, and I don't see any reason to change it. We haven't had any problems here with elections, so.
How many years have we been doing this? Was it two, is it the last two elections?
2019.
2019, when we started countywide?
Mm-hmm, yes, sir.
But, at that time, we didn't cut it to the 19 then, though.
No, my first election in '21, we had 23. So, we cut it down after that to 17. And that's just because, I mean, we're getting less than 100 people at those polling locations, keeping them open and having the equipment and the people out there, it just...
I just, I don't understand. I mean, I've read articles on this and that, but I don't understand. And I think you know you've got the court's support, because we're the ones who voted it in. And, I mean, I don't understand the argument in these rural counties about having, where you can vote anywhere in the county. I mean, I don't know that whoever is in opposition could convince me that it'd be better the other way.
Well, I remember, it was in 2000, in that election, when we had to actually have hairdryers drying our ballots over in the old courthouse, because it rained and rained and rained that day, and it wasn't until 3:00, 4:00 o'clock in the morning before we were able to finish that. Ballot stock, you know, when you go to these, you have to print specific ballots for each, under this, 30 locations.
That may turn out...
Thirty different styles versus with what is done now, where it's just a blank stock.
And our equipment, I trust it. It's, we've tested it. I mean, you'll hear news articles, there was one this morning I read. It's, it's, it works. I mean, and it's tested, we go through every scenario. I just, I trust it. I mean, I don't understand why there's so much controversy about it, but it works.
Some of the hardest things to do is find the polling places. We already struggled to find the ones that we have now that had to be 88 compliant and all that stuff for people to access them, you know, just like the ballots you said they're with. They probably come from Old Penn Castle Church, you know, that was a polling place, the roof was about to fall in on it, so.
Yeah.
I think we had to go down there and build new steps only one year to get people in to be able to vote.
Yeah.
Well, all we hear is that we want to make it easy for people to vote. But then, when we make it easy for people to vote, then you get the opposition won't make it harder for people to vote, because with the mobility of the population now, how could it not be easier to vote anywhere in the county? I mean, if I live in Chandler and I work in Athens, why is it not easier for me to vote in Athens?
I agree.
I mean, it doesn't make any sense, but most of the stuff they do down there doesn't mean anyway.
I think it may be a board to deter people from voting.
That's exactly what it is.
So, that's why I'm here. I'm here to fight for us today, so I want to make sure that this stays, stays how we have it. I don't want to go back the other way.
Well, most in the audience don't know that you're the president of the North and East Elections Administrators Conference or Association.
Association, yes. So, I represent our northeast region, and we, our board strongly supports this. Several have taken it, several are taking this resolution. So, if it does come down, we need to go to Austin, we're ready to go. So, we're just being proactive at this point. We sat down and didn't do anything last session. It came through, it didn't pass, so we're not sitting down this time. We're ready to fight for it.
How many counties in the North and East Association?
Oh, my, I don't know the answer to that. I know how many countywide polling places, but our countywide there is, there's 99 in the state.
Ninety-nine.
We've stretched from Dallas down to Angelina and up, so that corner is ours.
How many, how many counties in our northeast region are full polling places?
I don't, I don't have, I mean, I know Kaufman County's, her and I have been talking quite a bit, Rockwall, he was going for it, so...
Greg County.
Yeah, Greg County, Marshall, where's Marshall at? Harrison, Harrison County just passed theirs. So, we're, we want it. It works. It works for us. It works for our voters. I think we need to keep it.
For the elections process, this past one, we've, on Election Night, done by 9:30?
I printed my last report at 8:57. I went 9:00.
The efficiency level of it, and some say, well, you're sacrificing, you know, accuracy and da-da-da-da for all that, and you're really not.
I don't think so. And we test it, we verify it after. It's complete paper trail. If someone wants to sit down and audit it, it's there. Go ahead. So...
Court, any further comments on this before we have a reading of the proclamation? Ms. Lucky?
Can we read it?
Sure.
Resolution opposing the countywide elimination of the countywide polling place program, whereas Henderson County is a rural county and is bordered by the west to one of the fastest-growing counties in the state, and bordered by the east by Smith County, Texas, and being the only, only a one-hour drive from Dallas County. The county has many residents who commute to other counties for their work, entertainment, and other business affairs. Henderson County is geographically also very long county, covering 948 square miles, stretching 58 miles from east to west. Whereas, being a rural county with a populace that travels a significant distance from their homes, from work, school, entertainment, and other activities, many of our constituents take advantage of the ability to vote on Election Day in a polling location of their choice throughout the countywide polling place program, without having to adjust their work schedules or take time off work. Whereas, the use of countywide polling program has reduced citizens' confusion over where they can vote, and has reduced the number of provisional ballots for Henderson County. Whereas, the requirement to have precinct-based voting locations in Henderson County, where there would be no public buildings for use of polling locations in every voting precinct and private facilities, will no longer willing to, allowed to use their buildings, as polling sites will create a significant expense and hardship to Henderson County and its constituents. Whereas, at the time of this resolution, there's at least four bills pending, which seek to eliminate the poll, electronic poll books, eliminate electronic marking devices, and eliminate countywide polling places. Whereas, the use of electronic poll books was authorized by the Texas Legislature through the Texas Election Code, Section 31.014, and such poll books allow voters to sign in electronically while confirming identity through official identification and confirming voters have not already voted via absentee ballot or at another polling location, thus dramatically reducing the voter's fraud and improving the wait times for voters. Whereas, the use of electronic ballot marking devices permits voters to cast their ballot and with the aid of electronics on their physical ballot and devices, neither store or tabulate ballots, but allows the voter to record the vote, which provides voters an additional opportunity to review their votes prior to casting and reassures the voter has, the voter, the voter, their ballot is recorded accurately. Whereas, any Texas county using electronic poll books and electronic ballot marking devices are required by statute to obtain approval and certification from the Secretary of State. To use such equipment and such certification must be attained annually, which confirms the security of the voting process for the public. Whereas, the Commissioner's Court of Henderson County is of the opinion that the regression into the precinct-based voting would be a disservice to the voting community, reverse, reduce voter turnout, and could disenfranchise a large number of voters. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the undersigned elected officials do oppose the elimination of countywide polling places, the elimination of electronic poll books, and the elimination of electronic marking devices by the Texas Legislature.
Court, any further discussion on this matter? If not, entertain a motion.
I'll make the motion to approve the resolution opposing elimination of countywide polling places.
I'll second the motion.
Motion made by Commissioner McCann, second by Commissioner Richardson, to approve the resolution opposing elimination of countywide polling place program here in Texas as presented. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor? Passes unanimously by those present. Thank you, Ms. Lucky...
Thank you.
...for what you do and for bringing this to us. We greatly appreciate it.
I appreciate it. Thank you.
Item number four, consider and take action on the Henderson County investment policy for 2025. Mr. Biden?
Yes, sir. Court, so, I think I spoke with everybody about investment policy, which is something that we'll have to get a focus everywhere here. And of course, approved copy goes to our possible contract people, and so, I think those approval on this, we should act.
Ms. Mock, anything you'd like to add to this?
No, there's no changes in the policy. It's my policy. Quite simple.
Adding the text poll option was actually our last amendment to this, correct? Okay. Court, questions, comments? If not, entertain a motion.
I'd like to make the motion to approve the Henderson County investment policy for 2025 as presented.
I'll second that motion.
Motion made by Commissioner Spivin, second by Commissioner Richardson, to approve the Henderson County investment policy for 2025 as presented. Any further comments? All those in favor of the motion? Passes unanimously by those present.
Thank you, Court.
Thank you. Item number five, consider and take action on financing of three dump trucks for Rodenbridge Precinct One with Welch State Bank. Commissioner?
Yes, Court, this is actually two dump trucks and one haul truck. The backup's correct. It's the financing for the trucks, and we put some money down, and this will be repaid before the end of my term. Our equipment and trucks have just gotten so old that we've spent more money working on them than they're worth, so we're trying to, we found some, and we went through TIPS program to purchase them, and this is just for the financing, the interest rate. We went with the best interest rate. Ms. Mock helped me with this stuff, and I'd just like to get this approved today, and it's with your signature.
Court, questions? What's the total of the purchase?
Total is 308,000. It'll be 74,000 yearly.
Court, questions?
Is this a lease purchase or...
No, sir. It says lease purchase.
It is a lease purchase.
It is?
That's the only way we're allowed to finance these things.
Okay, then, yes, sir, it is.
Any other questions or comments? Entertain a motion with the judge's authorization assigned.
I'd like to make the motion to approve the financing of two dump trucks and one haul truck for Rodenbridge Precinct One with Welch State Bank with the judge's authorization assigned.
I'll second the motion.
Motion made by Commissioner Spivin, and second by Commissioner Richardson, to approve the financing agreement for two dump trucks and one haul truck for Rodenbridge Precinct One with Welch Bank with the county judge's authorization assigned. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Passes unanimously by those present.
Thank you, Court.
Thank you. Item number six, consider and take action on participation agreement in Reinvestment Zone Number One with the City of Athens. Court, we have met a couple of times discussing this. We have had our legal team work on drafting the document with the City of Athens. Kenneth or Clint, if y'all would like to come up and be a part of this discussion, one of you?
Good morning, Court. This is the TERZ zone that had been created by Athens. The city had passed this a few months ago, and this would be us joining the city for the portions of the ETJ that would involve the county and us joining that agreement. There's certain terms in here that are negotiable and can be looked at through the statute. Right now, we have it set at 35% for 15 years, and we have exclusions for new single-family construction, so we'd include public projects that are outside of that exclusion. There's also some terms in here that if the zone changes, the county would not automatically be involved in that change unless we wanted to be. So, we'd have to revote and amend our current agreement. So, if they changed the zone, that wouldn't affect us unless we wanted to be affected. So, that protects us. It also, any payments due from the county into the TERZ funding pot would not be due until collected. So, any delinquent taxes would not be charged to the county until we actually collect those funds. And sometimes, as we see on our courts every week, there's refunds of taxes, and if there's any refunds, what would happen is it would offset our payments. And so, the agreement takes care of all of those issues.
Court, questions? Comments?
Right now, right now, it's set at the 35%...
Yes, sir.
...for 15 years.
Yes, sir.
Which I think gives it enough time to start being successful, but also doesn't saddle the county with a long-term, 25-year investment that can always be renegotiated and re-entered into after the 15 years.
Correct. And so, if you did a lower one, five or 10 years, that may not be long enough to build up an investment pot, so it wouldn't be maybe large enough. And then, like you said, 20, 25, 30 years might be too long, so 15 was kind of that happy middle ground.
And on the, on the part about the, we really don't, we don't want to do the part with the single-family homes, new homes, is the road construction and everything part of that also?
Let me see, the exclusion should be under 4.2A. Oh, there it is. And so, this is just for the development of that, so any kind of...
Any kind of development?
Roads or anything like that that we'd want to participate in would be available, if it serves the public.
And there still can be negotiations on some of these things, even though we...
Yes, this kind of locks us in. We could amend it if necessary, but as of now, this would lock us into these type of terms, and so...
So, we get to put somebody on the board now that we're deciding?
There should be one board member for the county that would be a voting person, and I believe those are two-year terms. And then, I haven't checked with the university if Trinity is joining or not, but they'd also have a voting member if they've joined.
Is there any portion of what is presented from us that the court wishes to amend or change? Well, hearing that, once, if this agreement is approved... So if they changed the zone, that wouldn't affect us unless we want it to be affected. So that protects us. It also, any payments due from the county into the TERS funding pot would not be due until collected. So any delinquent taxes would not be charged to the county until we actually collect those funds. And sometimes, as we see on our courts every week, there's refunds of taxes, and if there's any refunds, what would happen is it would offset our payments. And so the agreement takes care of all of those issues.
Court, questions, comments?
Right now, right now, it's set at the 35% for 15 years.
Yes, sir.
Which I think gives it enough time to start being successful, but also doesn't saddle the county with a long-term 25-year investment that can always be renegotiated and re-entered into after the 15 years.
Correct. And so if you did a lower one, five or 10 years, that may not be long enough to build up an investment pot. It wouldn't be maybe large enough. And then, like you said, 20, 25, 30 years might be too long. So 15 was kind of that happy middle ground.
And on the, on the part about the, we really don't, we don't want to do the part with the single-family homes, new homes, is the road construction and everything part of that also?
Let me see. The exclusion should be under 4.2A. Oh, there it is. And so this is just for the development of that. So any kind of...
Any kind of develop?
Roads or anything like that that we'd want to participate in would be available, if it serves the public.
And there still can be negotiations on some of these things even though we...
Yes, this kind of locks us in. We could amend it if necessary, but as of now, this would lock us into these type of terms. And so...
So we get to put somebody on the board now that we're deciding?
There should be one board member for the county that would be a voting person, and I believe those are two-year terms. And then I haven't checked with the university if Trinity is joining or not, but they'd also have a voting member if they've joined.
Is there any portion of what is presented from us that the court wishes to amend or change? Well, hearing that, once, if this agreement is approved, steps then begin for the selection of the member from this body to be a voting member on the TERS board, correct?
Correct. So once this court agrees to this agreement, signs it, the city signs it, we are then a participant, then this commissioner's court would then elect who they want appointed to that board and put that member on.
Okay.
I think in the workshop, too, that the city said that there wouldn't be any debt, that it'd all be funds collected before they were sent, that there wouldn't be any debt for the, for the TERS.
Yeah, that's correct. That's what they said, that they will operate from a cash basis at this point in time.
And I believe they're using 2024 last year as their base year.
Could you explain really for the public what, what this is and what this 35% means?
So the city and now the county have agreed upon, in certain areas of this tax reinvestment zone, certain amounts above the base year, so in this case, I think it's 50% for the city. In our case, if we agreed to it, would be 35% above that base year, is going to be put into a fund, and then that fund would be used for public work projects in the city and the county ETJ area of these certain areas. I don't know if it's on here, but attachment, they should have that map, and that would show the areas of this zone. This would be the tax rate. So taxes above the base year, 35% of that collected tax would then go into this pot of money, and the city's going to contribute, I believe, 50%. And so it's going to go into this pot of money that would then be used to reinvest into public work projects. And so that would, that way, there's a fund for that. And so we're using, I guess, the taxes paid is going into something where we can now allot it to something good and use that for projects. And there's the zone up there on the, on the map.
I think a lot of the, some of that area up there in the northeastern part of the zone is economic development land, too, that is something that I think maybe they may want to do some investment in, sewer and water and stuff like that to make it more appealing to someone to buy or purchase also, too, probably because I don't think there's any utilities and stuff out that way. So that's, that's part of investment, part of it, I think, some of it.
Correct. That could encourage a business if there's no water utilities at that point, the city could maybe use that money or the county and then have water given to that business or to encourage development. It's like an incentive program.
The only complication that I think might pop is with, from the looks of this, the hospital property is in this reinvestment zone. And under our agreement, we rebate to them all of that tax for that property in our, in our agreement. That's the only sticking point that may come up over time.
I believe if that agreement was agreed to first, then their tax rate would then just be nil.
Well, no, no, it's, we got the agreement with the hospital, but now we're in...
This other agreement?
We're joining into this, which then makes us liable by agreement 35% above the base year. So the base is set, but there will be growth on that. So that is...
And I would, it's also, the county would be on the hook for that 35% under our agreement.
Do we, Ms. Monk, do we collect that money? Okay. So it's for money collected?
Yes. I just, it just occurred to me.
Yep. Because they're fixing to do some new construction up there, too.
It may be something we need to discuss.
Pardon?
Can we get that property excluded from the agreement?
We, we can.
Any part of our agreement, this is what truly controls that. So we need to have that discussion.
And I'm not sure you believe we can exclude, because once the TERS is created, it's not our TERS, it's the city's TERS.
Well...
I don't know if we can alter by agreement certain parts, because I just hear the plan issue, I think, kind of, you have to look at it and see.
Is the hospital not in the ETJ? It's fully in the corporate limits of the municipality?
Well, it's within this reinvestment zone, in or out. To me, it has no bearing. It's, this, this, our part of it is what's going to be in focus.
I think we need to have that discussion before we pass it.
Yeah. I mean, just for the feeling, I, there's strong interest and support for this, is we don't get to sit and talk, we get once, four times a month to sit and talk about these things as a group, and that, that just occurred to me. How about we table this or take no action? And...
We could look at that.
Okay. Yeah, at this time, why don't we not take action and allow the attorneys to look forward with that? Because, you know, it's one thing to say it doesn't cost us anything and then turn around and it actually does, would cost for us to flesh it out so we don't actually have to, it actually costing us.
Thank you, Court.
All right. Court, any comments before we move on? All right. And then we will move on to item number seven. Consider and take action to reappoint four members, Alicia Mickelson, Charla Farrel, Wade Carter, and Josh Chappell, to the Henderson County Regional Fair Park Board for the two-year, for the two-year term ending January 31, 2027. Court, it's that time to appoint these. Commissioner, you brought these four on the agenda, if you would speak to it?
Yes, Judge, I got with the Fair Park Board and checked with these members that are due for their terms ending and all of them's agree and still wanting to be part of the Fair Park Board. And so we're wanting to reappoint them for another two years.
Court, questions? Hearing none, entertain a motion.
I'd like to make a motion to reappoint the four members of the Henderson County Regional Fair Park Board for a two-year term ending January 31, 2027. Those are Alicia Mickelson, Charla Farrel, Wade Carter, and Josh Chappell.
I'll second the motion.
Motion made by Commissioner Richardson and second by Commissioner McCam to reappoint the four members to the Henderson County Regional Fair Park Board for two-year terms ending January 31, 2027, Alicia Mickelson, Charla Farrel, Wade Carter, and Josh Chappell. Any further discussion? All those in favor passes unanimously by those present. Item number eight, is consider and take action to appoint members to the Henderson County Historical Society. Court, this is something we do annually. We reappoint and make appointments to the Historical Commission, and what you have here is the, the names that have been put forward. Many of these are returning, and they have a couple of years coming up on us. No, folks don't remember this or not, but in 2026, we're at our 250th anniversary of the Declaration of Independence. So I'm sure there's going to be a push to start in celebrating and memorializing that. But these individuals here are dedicated to the preservation of history and be happy to answer any questions if I can. Mr. Bynum, you're one of the individuals.
Yeah, I don't have any, but I think it's a great thing to receive this, these board, they, they really do a good job of this, and they're dedicated as well, so.
Court, if there's no further comment, we'll entertain a motion.
I'll make the motion to approve.
I'll second the motion.
Motion made by Commissioner Spivey and second by Commissioner Richardson to approve, to approve the appointment of the listed members to the Henderson County Historical Society. Any further discussion? All those in favor passes unanimously. Item nine, consider and take action to perform work on a roadway in the LaRue Cemetery as per 715.028 of the Texas Health Safety Code located in Precinct Four. Commissioner?
Yes, Board, you'd see that the Board of Trustees is in the backups, written a letter to the court on asking for some help on a road, and y'all sent a backup on the north side of the cemetery. They were donated some land by the McDaniel family several years ago, and I think they're, they've expanded enough where they're going to start using this part here, and they, there's a roadway that's made to go around the cemetery, as you see in the backup, in that, that third entrance there, that'd give them some access to get hursed and vehicles in there for parking area and a roadway that runs around and connects to the other loop of the old part of the cemetery. And this here, we're doing is laboring equipment, and we're doing a pass-through on the millings that we get from the state, so there's no cost to the county on any material or anything.
Court, questions? For those of you that don't know, the, the code allows for the county to provide assistance in work in historical cemeteries of over 50 years of age, I believe is correct? Any further discussion? Entertain a motion.
I'd like to make a motion to perform work on roadway in LaRue Cemetery as per 713.028 of the Texas Health and Safety Code located in Precinct Four.
I'll second.
Motion made by Commissioner Richardson and second by Commissioner Spivey to approve, to perform work on a roadway in the LaRue Cemetery as per 713.028 of the Texas Health and Safety Code located in Precinct Four. Any further discussion? All those in favor passes unanimously by those present. Item 10, receive financial reports, and we have none today. Item 11 is consider and take action on payroll distributions and accounts cash sheets.
Good morning.
Good morning.
We have biweekly three and also December's monthly report.
Okay. Court, questions concerning the payroll dispersments for biweekly number three? Hearing none, entertain a motion.
I'd like to make the motion to approve the payroll dispersments for biweekly number three as presented.
I'll second the motion.
Motion made by Commissioner Spivey and second by Commissioner McCam to approve the payroll dispersments totals for biweekly three as presented. All those in favor passes unanimously by those present. Any questions concerning the accounts cash sheet? Hearing none, entertain a motion.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the accounts, accounts cash sheets.
I'll second the motion.
Motion made by Commissioner Richardson, second by Commissioner McCam to approve the accounts cash sheet for the period ending December 2024 as presented. All those in favor of the motion passes unanimously by those present. Thank you, ma'am. Item 12 is consider and take action on submitted contracts, which we have none. Item 13 is consider and take action on a request for right-of-way permits. Commissioner Spivey?
Yes, Court, I have a right-of-way permit in the backup, but I'd like to take no action on it. I got to looking at it closer, and there was a road in there that they did not list on the report for the permit, so I'd like to take no action on it today.
Okay. Commissioner McCam?
Yes, I have one from Moore Station Water Supply Company to repair a leak, repair a leak on, at 9153 County Road 3603.
Questions for the commissioner? Entertain a motion.
I move, we approve the notice of proposed utility line activity for Moore Station Water Supply Company to repair a leak at 9153 County Road 3603 with the commissioner's signature.
I'll second the motion.
Motion made by Commissioner McCam, second by Commissioner Richardson to approve the right-of-way agreement with Moore Station Water Supply Corporation for repair of leak at 9153 County Road 3603 with the commissioner's authorization to sign. Any further discussion? All those in favor passes unanimously by those present. Item 14, consider and take action on submitted budget amendments. Ms. Monk?
Oh, I do have that. And this is our payroll accrual for 2024. I know it's expensive, and it'll probably continue to be expensive, especially next year. We have 13 days in this year's accruals, or almost a full payroll. So that affects any turnovers in the department, can affect how the accruals are calculated. Last year's accruals affect this year's budget, 244 budget, and then of course, any raises due to step plan or otherwise affect how the accruals are calculated. There's a lot into it. It's going to be just as interesting, but after that, it will cut way back.
Court, questions? Hearing none, entertain a motion.
I'd like to make the motion to approve the budget amendments as presented.
I'll second the motion.
Motion made by Commissioner Spivey and second by Commissioner Richardson to approve the budget amendments for 2024 as presented. Any further comments? All those in favor passes unanimously by those present. Item 15, consider and take action on payment of bills. Ms. Carpenter?
Yes, we have to set today our first set of fiscal year 2024 in the amount of $85,803.64.
Commissioner Spivey?
I have no questions, Judge.
Commissioner McCam?
I have none.
Commissioner Richardson?
No questions, Judge.
Entertain a motion.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the fiscal year 2024 bills in the amount of $85,803.64 as presented.
I'll second his motion.
Motion made by Commissioner Richardson and second by Commissioner Spivey to approve the 2024 bills in the amount of $85,803.64 as presented. Any further discussion? All those in favor passes unanimously by those present. Ms. Carpenter?
Yes, sir. It goes for year 2025 in the amount of $159,889.64.
Commissioner Spivey?
No questions, Judge.
Commissioner McCam?
I have none.
Commissioner Richardson?
No questions, Judge.
I have a side question. As we are developing the software and everything, and this is a song from when we went to STW, the percentages, they're working to get a lot of those, so we have, some on here has remaining percentages in the budget, some don't. So I know this conversion to the new software has been a load. It's an opportunity to, yeah, all right. Entertain a motion.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the fiscal year 2025 bills in the amount of $159,889.54 as presented.
I'll second his motion.
Motion made by Commissioner Richardson, second by Commissioner Spivey to approve the 2025 bills in the amount of $159,889.54 as presented. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor passes unanimously by those present. Item 16 is consider and take action on submitted plaits, and I don't believe we have any today. Number 17 is open and consider bids, of which there are none. Thank you, ma'am. Item 18, consider and take action to adjourn.
No moves.
I'll second the motion.
Motion made by Commissioner Spivey and second by Commissioner McCam to adjourn at 9:48. All those in favor of the motion passes unanimously by those present. Thank you for being with us today. We appreciate you being here. Have a great week.